This conference will now be recorded.
There we go. We also have proof of notice. Notices were put out, not just on the notice board, but in emails sent out to the community. And also, we put notices at the gates. You may have seen them advertising that this town hall was happening this evening. So the agenda, which is up on the screen there, we now finally have this screen working in the room to our advantage, so we can post it up there rather than you craning to see the other one. I'll go through who our directors are. We'll talk about the Champions Gate community. We'll then talk about the First Residential Structure in terms of their organization. I'll give you a bit of a turnover update and what's happening there, what's happened there as well, what we've achieved in 2022. And then what I'm going to do is I'm going to hand over to First Services to go through what they're going to manage in terms of our goals and objectives after 2023. The economic impacts that we're all having to deal with, just to shed some light on everybody's understanding of where we've had to get to on the assessments in terms of building in the factors that are impacting our community at the moment, which are the economic issues around inflation, not just gas inflation, wage inflation, food inflation, all of our vendors inflation that are having to be built into the contracts, are built into the assessments. Then we'll show you the assessments as we are at this moment in time, and then we'll open it up for a question and answer. So if you have questions, if you can hold them to that end of the we've gone through, because we may answer the question as we go through it, and then you'll be able to. If we don't, then please ask the question at the end. So if I could add the next slide up, please. TJ? Oh, it's not on there.
Oh, it's on this one. Sorry.
Okay.
That's your ongoing agenda.
Oh, that's the ongoing agenda. Okay, so the ongoing agenda and the screen. I know people on the phone can't see this. Oh, they can?
Yeah.
Okay, cool. All right, board members, myself, Marilyn McNivitts, who's the vice president, she's online, and she looks after the golf and the covenants. I look after the legal, and I also am a board liaison on the art committee. We have John Lozicki, who's our treasurer, who deals with the finance side. So again, thank John for all the work he's put in over the last few weeks and months in terms of pulling this budget together with services. Terry Horn, one of our newer members to the board. Terry is the secretary for the board. He's also responsible as board liaison on the Food and Beverage and Activities Committee, as well as the Communications Committee. And we're already seeing some activity going on there as well in terms of some of the ideas that are coming through that. And Pat Klein, who's the director, he's on the Facilities Committee and the Villas Subcommittee. And Pat's been very, very engaged with our discussions with potential landscape providers. You know, we've narrowed it down to three potential providers. We're working through with those to come to a decision on which one will be appointed to support this community going forward. So a lot of work has been done by the Facilities Committee and Pat in the last few weeks. So thank you, Pat, for that. If you do have any questions when you get back, you think about afterwards, there's always the board email that you can send those questions to. That's monitored constantly for any incoming emails and questions you may have. And there's the First Customer, First Services Customer Care Line, which is the phone number on the screen there as well. We'll be posting this presentation onto the connect, so you will have access to it there as well in case you don't make a note of it just now. Can we flip to the next slide, please?
Customer care is multilingual, too.
That's right. John just reminded me that the customer care line is also multilingual. So they speak many, many different languages. So if English isn't your first language, then there will be somebody there that's able to help you in your own language. Moving on to the community. I just wanted to, for people who maybe have joined the community in the recent past, it's sometimes a little complicated to understand the various different associations and where they fit into the structure of the Champions Gate community. So it's easy for us, you know, to put a pictorial up there. So the pyramid, I think, best describes how our community is set up. You have the Master Association, which is the overriding association that governs primarily the gates, the major roadways, not the roadways within the country club, but the major roadways, and security. So that's predominantly what the master's responsibility is. You then obviously have the Retreat, which is the vacation, as we all know about them. The Country Club is the condos, which are just down the side here, the 168 condo units that are down the side of Whole Ten. That's the Champions Club. And then you have five other condo associations, which are all over on North Track and on by the, where the new Oasis water park is. There's a lot of condos there. So there's five other associations which make up the Champions Gate community. Country Club, obviously, we now have, we turned over from control of the Declaran in August last year to we've been in control of our own destinies to a certain extent for the last 14 months, 15 months or so. And so within that, we've looked at the budget. So the budget that we put together for the Country Club, not the Master, not the Oasis, this is just the Country Club, it's for the golf amenities, the Plaza, the pools, the pickleball, the workout facilities here. You know, we've got a synthetic golf green over here as well, and the pot cheap ball. It's also for the Plaza Restaurant and Grill. It's for the landscaping. It's for the Spectrum service that we have, as well as the SWS security services that we have. And then the general community administration, which is the administration offices, you know, that support the underlying community. The Master has the expense of the tennis course and the main gate. The We Don't cover those. And We Don't cover the Oasis. The Oasis is a separate assessment. And obviously, with the new pool, sports facilities, sorry, the new water park facility that's been opened probably January, February time next year, Lanaro advised me, then obviously that will be part of the Oasis as well. So moving on from there, please. This is the First Services team. So you have Caneel Mills, who's the general manager, supporting us. You have TJ, who is our Community Operations Manager, also studying for his camp, so we'll be out at camp, which is a community association manager. You have RJ, who's our... Where's he at? He wasn't sat there. Oh, he's there. He was sat there a minute ago. Moved, he's like a ninja. RJ, who's our head golf pro. Is Ethan? No?
Ethan's sick.
Ethan's sick, okay. We have an open position for the Food and Beverage Director. So this position will manage both the Plaza and the Golf Club.
Alex. The grill is leaving.
Sorry. Could you put your phone on mute, please? We can hear you. Okay. So the Food and Beverage Director, that's an open position we're looking to fill. And then we have Natalie.
I moved to.
What, you moved to? Natalie recently recruited as our controller, so we'll do a lot of the financial bookkeeping aspects for the community, which is desperately needed for us. And we also have Nicole here, who's our Activities Director for the social. Behind me, we have Brittany. I mean, Gigi. Who have been our admin assistants and are looking after the front desk and helping us out there as well. I think that was all of the First Services. You can go to the next one, which is the Turnover Update. So we turned over from the developer August last year. We've been doing a lot of work in terms of looking at the historical accounts. We've employed an independent auditor to do a forensic analysis for us of all of those, or 10 years, I guess. They're going to go back to 2012 and look at all of the aspects of the finances over that period of time and then come back to us with what they feel is due to us from Lanaro. And, you know, what we owe Lanaro, if potentially that is the case as well. There's a couple of minor things that we need to deal with in terms of what we need to pay Lanaro. But overall, they will be definitely owing us money. It's just a case of putting a number on that and being able to verify that number with the data. So that's what our auditor is working on at the moment. The engineering firm, again, we hired an engineering firm. And this is all being covered by the $150 special assessment that we did. So these funds are being covered by that particular pay... These companies are being covered by that particular payment. So the engineering firm came in, they did their engineering analysis. They also did a reserve study as well. And a reserve study is basically looking at our property and saying, okay, within 20 years, you'll need to replace the roof in the Plaza. So you need to start to building up reserves to cover that. Those sorts of aspects. You know, your golf course is only going to last so long. You need to repair that in 15 years' time by putting new greens in. So you need to be putting reserves in place for that. Those sorts of things, the reserve study identified. And when we get to the assessments, we'll talk a little bit more about that. We also had a call earlier this week with the attorney and the engineer to go through the reserve study, to go through the engineering study, I should say, and identify what our next steps are with all of the defects within the community and what we need to do in terms of taking action against the developer to hold them accountable for those defects. You know, there's a number that I could talk about. The biggest one being the sidewalks down Dub Valley, where it's like a roller coaster ride. Clearly, it's not ADA compliant. You know, we shouldn't be responsible for that. That was the constructor. So it's how we hold them responsible. So we've got the attorneys and the engineering firm talking to each other to try and come up with the next steps for that for us. And then legal. You know, there was a lot when we... There was dozens of plots within the community that were incorrectly deeded to Lanaro, or to the Retreat, or to the Master. We've been working diligently over the last 12 months to get them corrected on the Osceola County website, so that they are in our name. Example was Holes 3 through 8 were all in Lanaro's name. We've now got those transferred over to the Country Club. The Plaza, this plot of land we're on now is in Lanaro's name. We've got that transferred over to the Country Club. So we've rectified all of those. So, you know, it's not something that is going to finish soon. It's going to be a long process. Once you get legal involved, we then start to say, well, you know, we think you need to rectify all of these issues with the community. They're going to push back. They're going to make us an offer at some stage. We'll then have to decide whether we want that offer. So it's a long process, which will go on probably for a year or two. So, you know, don't expect it to all be resolved within the next few months. It will take a while. If you could go on to the next slide, please. TJ? So just wanted to, excuse me, just wanted to highlight some of the accomplishments that we have as a community achieved this year. Obviously, the big one was changing a management company from Icon to First Services. That's now four months into the process. You know, we're still, as we see, we're recruiting new people, building the team up. First Services are building the team up. I think golf is working really well. We're working on the Plaza, we're working on the admin, we're working on response times. So, you know, it's something that, you know, will continue to evolve, but I think it would technically be a lot of work to make at that time. Approved and our completed community enhancement projects. The North Pool Palm and Plaza Palm Project, we have approved for those to be replaced. So the palms that were diseased over at the North Pool and the one we've got here, or two we've got here, that's been approved by the board. It's a case of getting the landscaping company to come in and deal with those. Golf course enhancements, obviously, this was really the community coming together and helping us enhance the golf courses with donations, with events that enabled us to put additional palms, plants, trees from the donations of the community. So thank you very much for those. The golf cart fleet, that will be, it has been ordered. It is on its way. We anticipate that it's going to be here in the first quarter next year. With everything, supply chain is a challenge for us all, and it is no different for those providers of those golf carts. New golf maintenance, that's something that we've, again, approved, and we do have some of that already, and we're just waiting on others to come through. Data center move. This was something that we wanted for not just a contingency perspective, but also to free up space both here at the Plaza and also down at the Golf Club. If you weren't aware, we have a room off of the gym here at the Plaza, which was stacked with all of our servers that held all of our data and information. So the air conditioning in there was not great. So it was often up at 90 degrees, which is not where you should have those. You should have them cooler. Also, down at the Golf Club, the office, as you go in on the right-hand side, had stacked, in the situation, all of our servers were in there stacked up. So we've moved our technology company that they would off-site those and move them to a Tampa data center, which was accomplished over the last two or three weeks. So that's been done. It's all been moved down there. We now have the free room in the gym, which will use for more office space, and the same down at the Golf Club, which I know RJ has already built out office space in there with screens, et cetera. So already been put to good use. New Smith machine. There was, those of you who used the gym were lobbying us as part of the original request from Icon to have Smith machine in the gym. That was never delivered. We've now delivered that. Pool furniture and umbrellas. We've also put some new pool furniture and umbrellas out in the Plaza. And then we've approved Phase One of the Plaza Kitchen, which is to improve... You getting that? Everybody getting that? I'll just give it a minute. Was that done? Okay. So the Plaza Kitchen, Phase One. I mean, we looked at Plaza Kitchen. It was built as it was designed, but the design is not good, which is why we have issues where, we've had issues historically with the food, particularly the fryer. You know, there's that much fried food that is cooked in that kitchen. They have one fryer, so they're cooking chicken tenders, fries, everything in that one fryer. So the Phase One is to kind of shuffle the equipment along to put another fryer in, which we approved. And that's, again, subject to supply. They're going to be putting that in at some stage, hopefully in the near future. And that should improve certain aspects of the kitchen. There are other phases that we'll look to, but we wanted to get that, which is more of a quick fix, which will not be thrown away when we go to the next phase. It certainly will be part of the overall structure, but it helps us get, you know, some efficiencies in the kitchen here. Similarly, down at the Golf Grill, part of the problem, and we've been hit by the county health inspector three times now by food not being correctly refrigerated down there. And the last time, we got fined, what was it, 500 bucks or something, which we've had to pay. So what we've done is we've agreed to have some additional refrigeration down in the cart bar for the Golf Grill, which will overcome that health issue going forward. I mean, I know that the Spectrum contract seems a long time ago when we renegotiated that, but it actually wasn't signed until the beginning of this year. So that was something we benefited from. And the new terms only came in in May this year. So the reduced cost to us, which is saving us a significant amount of money. And then, as mentioned, the pending landscape contract under review. We are reviewing that, and hopefully we'll be able to get to a decision fairly quickly on that. There is a clear front runner on it, and we're just waiting for a few things to go through, and then the board will be making a decision. So that's really an update on our 2022 accomplishments. I'm now going to ask Caneel to talk about the goals and objectives for 2023.
Thank you, Caneel. So our goal really is to continue on the work that we've been doing with 2022. The groundwork was really laid with a lot of the projects we've been working on with the ITS move of the data center to Tampa really opened up the caveats of other projects that can streamline and improve our service within the community. Just to stay in order of my bullets, I'm going to make sure that we... The landscape renegotiation or new contract is going to be a big impact for us in 2023. We know how far off we are in scope with where we want to be as a community and driving the value of the community through our landscape and the perception of our law. So that's going to be a key focus for us in 2023 of partnering tightly with whoever that contract holder is and holding them accountable to the contract terms that we have negotiated in full with them in partnership. Reviewing the POS, so part of that ITS point, was our point-of-sale system, many of you, that turns into AKA your Plaza statements that are impossible to read. It's a huge focus of, we know that they're hard to read, they're backward. If you don't mind muting your phones or your computers at home, please. It's a big point for us. It has to coalesce with golf. It has to coalesce with the Plaza and what we're seeing so that we can efficiently use our amenities. But also, it'll funnily talk to each other. Where the golf statement and the Plaza will be joined as one server and have one communication channel. So that's really exciting. We're reviewing a couple of different companies for that to see what is the best fit for the community. But that's really one of our next target goals. Increasing the lifestyle activities in the community and engagement. We have Ms. Nicole Ron, who does an amazing job, but there's some budget restrictions there. She's built me some of that into the budget for next year so that she can deliver on the many things that we've heard from you. We do hear you. As well as her partnering with GAY from Golf and making sure that we are utilizing both facilities and making sure that the community is really using a full circle aspect of the engagement... Sorry, of the activities we have available for you. Coordinating with the committees, we went over the committees that we have, but utilizing them and leveraging them, because they are your eyes and ears. They're the community that we want to know what's going on, what needs to happen. So making sure that we partner with them to bring their proposals and their ideas from the committees to in front of the boards and getting those actioned upon. That's a lot of how a lot of this has already happened this year. Palms, you know, it's all been feedback and the committees bringing it over and then getting in front of the board. So your board does hear you. Reviewing and leveraging our vendors. There's a lot of opportunity through First Service with our Visian Pro Vista and different purchasing powers that we have. So we're getting in front of a lot of our contracts and just scrubbing through, not the big contracts, but those that we can streamline and have some economies of scale. We're going to dig into those and really see what we can do. Nothing's going cheaper this year. We know that the inflation, everything's happening. So what can we do to be, you know, fiduciarily responsible for you to bring down those costs? Re-benchmarking, this is going to be a big one for us, which is re-benchmark and develop a three- to five-year plan for the community, really sitting and understanding what the community is, where we want to be three to five years from now, and developing a strategic strategy to get there. It's not an immediate thing. It's a stepped process that has to be done over time. So figuring out what that is, so we know our trajectory and what our stepping stone points will be. And then lastly, with the turnover of the Master Association, we really want to engage them and know how we can partner with them. They are our neighbors. They're carbon, what your services are. So it's really making sure that we continue that partnership and are active within the community. Economic impacts. So it's the time of uncertainty. Starting in February, we know we started seeing the rise in inflation. Supply chain, starting with COVID, it started with COVID and it has not stopped. We're trying to get overcome it, but it's really been an ongoing struggle that's impacting a lot of the different things that we're trying to accomplish. So supply chains are slowing things down, driving costs up, soaring insurance rates. I've shared Partners is who does, is our intermediary for insurance purposes. And we're looking at for HOA specifically, a 10% to 30% increase in our various insurance policies that we're required to have. Labor rates, the central Florida market is highly competitive right now. We're right here next to Disney. They're paying the rates for entry level. We're right... Hospitality is a big part of what drives our community here. So we had a base rate increase in the central Florida area of 5.5%. And then we also are seeing, and you've heard it on the news, you know, soft quitting or retention bonuses. And then people are changing industries. I mean, it's all over the place of how we are. So the board, we really worked hard to make sure that First Services is competitive in our pay, but fair. So it's, but it's one of the drivers that's going to continue to grow as we move forward. Fuel increases, 45% to 55% fuel increases. I mean, you all are feeling it at the pumps, just like I am. Chemical and material increases. Energy, Duke announced their 13.5% increase in 2023 that they will be implementing. So we make sure that we put that into the budget so that we were prepared. And then food cost increases have been on the rise, and that's just even for a short term. It's been going up 20, 30% over more, over the last two years. So if you can see here, too, for the Florida sake, we're number 11 for inflation.
Can you just get closer to the speakers?
Sorry.
These ones as well. Yeah?
Sorry. We're number 11 in the country for inflation. So 13.7% inflation is what Florida's averaging. So the next slide is going to be the slides. All right. So, yep, I'm back. So 2023 assessments versus the 2022. I want to say here in preface that the board with the Finance Committee for our service, we worked hard, very hard together, going through line item by line item on the budget, making sure that we streamlined things, buying things, and did a really thorough job. And a lot of work went into the budget to make sure that we had cleaned it out, that it was clean of anything that didn't need to be there. Your predominant contracts are all there, that your 80% of your costs are fixed in this community, and that anything that was variable, that we gave it sensitive consideration of if it needed to be there and what 2022 was going to look like for the community given the uncertainty that's built into the economy. So you'll see your villas, they're going to be getting your picture, so that your lot size or villas at the top, number of units within those units or within those lot sizes. And then your monthly assessment as it breaks out. Now, the next slide is going to show you what it's based on. And then plus your $75 food and beverage credit. Can I say that?
Yeah.
So we did hear you on the food and beverage credit. So we've heard me say it twice, beverage. So we have gone back to including your beverage into your... Please start coming back to class. No, it's not budgeted that way. But it's right around the corner. But $75 towards your food and beverage, not your tax, not your tip. That doesn't benefit the Plaza and maintaining our costs here. But it is important. We want to get you back in here. We have seen a drop in your attendance. I want to make sure that I say that, because the drop in the attendance, it's been about 30, 31% since we did this change. We really do need you to come back, support the Plaza. The cost of it is there. It's going to be within your scope, one way or another. I'd rather you come in and enjoy it and let us talk to you, you know, have network with your community. The whole point of the community's amenity says for that, so.
I have a question. I'm not sure which lot I'm supposed to be in. Is it the 40, is it going to be the 60? We'll do that after. Okay. Slide.
Make sure you're on the speaker.
Like here in the, sorry.
Talk about reserves.
So with the reserves, we have the monthly assessments on your assessment line, your food and beverage, plus your food and beverage. And then here in the gray is your 2023 assessments. So with your 2023 assessments, here's your 2022 assessments, and then the difference, the increase. So 12%, given the inflation that we're going through, the price increases that we're managing through. This was a hard number to really manage our way to, but we felt it was important to get there. this this was a hard number to really manage our way to, but we felt it was important to get there. So it's a 12.4% increase across the board. And then your reserves are down below. So with the villas, the 54, and then 45 at the bottom.
Just, just let, sorry, just a second. We will be posting this, so you'll be able to see this online. So you don't need to take the photos. We'll be posting it.
Oh, yeah.
It will be posted online, so you'll be able to view it at your leisure.
All right.
Can we just go back and make sure we're clear on on the numbers? Yeah, we're just going to go back. So that the highlighted number there is the the number that the assessment is going to be for 2023 in comparison to the current 2022 number. In addition to that, you will have the the reserves that are payable. As I mentioned earlier, we we had the reserve studies done by the engineering firms. They calculated how much we needed to put into reserve fund to cover future capital costs, such as redoing the roof here, redoing the pools, whatever it is, they assessed it all. And that is also going to be part of the assessment in 2023. So for the villas, there'll be the 54 plus, and for the rest of the community, for all the community, there will be the 45. So that will be the reserve assessment that will be part of your assessment for 2023, in addition to the 2023 monthly assessment highlighted. Just wanted to make sure everybody was clear on that.
All right. And then when you do get the, when we put this online, the supplemental, it would be impossible to see, but the supplemental budget rule is in appendixes below, that'll be on subsequent slides that you can review. But high level, we've got flowing into any assessment with a community is your administrative, food and beverage, golf, Plaza, pool, and your amenities. So Jim, I'll move in just a second. I promise I won't take it down. Your 40s, 50s, 60s, and 80s landscape, and then your villas landscaping, irrigation, and termites, and then divided by your lot size, by your number of lots within those lot sizes.
Open it up for questions.
Neil, could we clarify again what you just said about the return? Because it sounded to me that it's the regular assessment of very natural to get now.
Yep.
Plaza is going to be an additional one monthly for 2023, in addition to the 12%.
Yeah, if you could go back to the previous slide, please. So the question is, can I clarify how the assessment is going to work in 2023 versus the reserves? So if we if we take, for example, the largest number of units is on the 60-foot lots. So you've got 383 units. This year, those units were paying $454. That included the $75 food credit. Next year, they'll be paying $508. That's a 12% increase. But in addition to that, they will be paying a $45 assessment for the reserves.
Per month.
Per month. It's based upon the reserve study, which the engineering firm undertook. Not just that reserve study, also Lennar did a reserve study a couple of years ago, based upon the two. This is where the reserve study came out. It's about protecting for the future, building that capital fund should there be a problem with our our community going forward. It's recommended by Florida statute, it's recommended by our returners and our auditors. And it's, you know, financially responsible. The community should have that fund available.
There's lots in the room. Makes it difficult to hear online.
Yeah, can we have long conversation?
So Neil, that reserve fund for your proposal for 2023, was Lennar, what was Lennar doing?
Yeah, that's a good question, David. The question is, you know, what was Lennar doing about reserve funds, you know, since they took over the community back in 2012, when they first started to construct? Unfortunately, under Florida statute, they had to do nothing, only with the condo association. So we're covered by the 720 Florida statute. Under that statute, the developer does not need to provide a reserve fund, and they chose not to. If it was a condo association, they have to, because you've you've got that different regulation, which is a 718. But we're governed under the 720, so they did nothing, which is why we need to make sure that as we do the turnover audit and the engineering study, we make sure we hold them accountable for as much as possible that we can to get as much money out of them.
And just far, I'm sorry, I'm talking to this. I know some of the stories. Neil, do you have an estimate projection of what you might think we might end up getting from the number that I cushioned the globe?
You know, I I I wouldn't like to put a number out there, because if a number gets out there, they find out what that number is, then that's where they start their negotiation. So I'm not going to put a number out there. Let them come back with a number, and then we'll start to negotiate.
Right. But you you know, without saying a number, that there is a projection that might change.
We know from the engineering firm what they've assessed in terms of what's wrong. They can give us a number if we need to. So anything that Lennar offers to us, we will make sure we do a due diligence to check whether that's a valid offer. And we'll make sure, because they can't release, we we won't release them from any commitments until we're all comfortable that we've got as much done as possible out of them. Or they're giving us enough money for us to rectify it ourselves.
Neil, let me ask you a question. I've been here possibly two years, every year. So thus far, you know, the HOA is going up like 75, 80 bucks. Now, when will that start to turn around like where it's at? Looking forward, for long, it's going to be like a thousand dollars.
I mean, you know, believe me, I'm a homeowner too. I'm paying, I'm seeing it going up as well. And it's just.
I know, it's just a question, you know?
I know, it's a fact of life, the economy, the way it is. I mean, you know, maybe we'll see a downturn next year. I'm not an economist, but I see the financial markets and, you know, the way the stock market's gone down over the last few months. Perhaps there may be.
Same time, you know, inflation kicks in, you know, and everyone's raises is not kicking in, you know, because you're not going to get it.
Part of the problem was that, part of the issue was before, well, up until August last year, Lennar was deficit funding. So it was false accounting in a way, because they were just funding any any gap, because they wanted to sell the properties, they wanted people to buy the homes. So where there was a shortfall between the assessments, between the income from the golf or the income from, well, the Plaza was maybe just about open, they were funding it. Now they've gone, they're not funding it. So that is a big cost to have to fund that difference.
You're right. Because I had to pay for the HOA, and some people didn't have to pay it for two years. Yeah.
Well, fortunately, that's also been a drag on us, particularly from a cash flow perspective, because Lennar had prepaid some two years with the people's assessments on a number of properties. So we didn't have that cash flow coming in. And so that causes an issue. But now that should probably roll off by the end of this year, and everybody should be paying their assessments. Yes?
I do.
Yes.
Okay, I just want to understand a little bit as far as on the villas part.
Yes.
So the 40, 50, 60, 80, that's the lot front.
That's the front and side, yes.
So and the villas is on one block, which is not a big block. There's like six, we call 16 units.
Yeah.
Of 20 feet. So we, I, my house is like maybe 20 feet. His house is 20 feet, and we all give 20 feet. So we're getting charged more than, I mean, there's 40 feet, 60, 50 feet, 60 feet, 80 feet, and we only have 20 feet. So in reality, it almost seems like you're making more off the villas because you're getting, if they were to just put houses there instead of villas, they would only make, they would only make, maybe put four or five houses there. But now you've got 16 houses there. And our lots are only 20 feet big each.
Yeah.
So you're, so it's, so there's four or six, you know, units per thing, and you're getting that amount from each unit.
Let me explain a little bit of why it's higher on the villas in terms of irrigation. So the irrigation of your landscaping is paid for by the association. My irrigation for my home, I pay for. So that's that's an additional cost that the villas have to the association that the rest of the homes do not have. And then you you do have all of the landscaping behind the villas that is communal, that needs to be, the grass needs to be cut. Well, the grassing, the grass needs to be dealt with by, you know, so that is obviously a cost as well.
So the houses pay for your own cutting grass?
No, no, no. But if you see that, the cost landscaping, irrigation, and termites cost, whereas irrigation and termites are paid for by the homeowners, not the villas. So that's an additional cost for the villas. Do you have any, any other questions in the room for this call? Any questions online, Marilyn? Do you want to have a look at this? Forty-three questions. Marilyn, was there any questions online?
Yes, there is, Neil. There's several. So the first one is, can we go with another internet provider individually at our own personal expense, or is that not allowed?
Can you go with your own? It would not mean that you could reduce your assessment for the spectrum cost, because that's a bulk cost for the community, and that's for a bulk provision of cable, internet, and phone services for all of the homes. I'm not sure how you would organize Wi-Fi.
You wouldn't save money, because whatever additional internet you get, you still have to pay the bulk fee.
Yes.
Another one here is with regard to the final point on the 2023 goals and objectives. We should really stress this engagement partnership, as well as developing some relationship with the retreat, turnover, HOA, and the CDD. Looking ahead, our largest, most impactful problems and issues will encompass those other groups who will need to work, what we need to work well with to address all of these issues when the traffic increases and the roads around the community come up to much higher traffic.
Yeah, I I agree. When I saw that bullet point, I did cross that it's not just the master association, but it's also all the CDD, and also working with, you know, the county as well, and you know, the fire department, sheriff's department, and, you know, working with all of those those external service providers to make sure that we're getting the right services for our community.
The next one is, I'm concerned with security and the access gates in the community on the other side of West Side Boulevard. The main gate fence stays open for a long time. Also, in the future, why not change and switch the residents to the rental property and the rental property for that side of the community? Or the access at the West Side Gate staying up?
I mean, I would suggest that they send a note through to us on that. You know, obviously, this board meet, this town hall is really about the 2023 budget. I know security is an issue. It is a master association predominantly that manages the gates. But certainly, you know, we're happy to take any questions and raise any issues with that master association and with the security provider, Ramco, which we have done on several occasions.
Next one is, if you want people to come back to the Plaza, why do you cut the lunch hours?
Well, you take that one.
We looked over a year plus of data and trying to figure out how do we not increase the wages that we're using and be able to drive sales still even higher? The feedback and where we see our missed opportunities is in the evening. So without adding additional burden to the community immediately, it's only a 60-day trial thing. It's always changeable, something that we can adjust. But really, no one, we, we only made, when I did full year year-to-date for this year, it was only $1,400 in sales from 11 to 1. But yet, at 8 o'clock, we had a drop off of over $16,000, went from $16,000 to nothing. So showing that we're just kicking you out. So trying to flux there without incurring additional costs. I can stay open. I'll gladly stay open, but there are costs to that decision. So again, trying to do the fiduciary thing of shifting the hours versus adding expenses. And then let's see after 60 days what that looks like for you, who comes back, how that is. If we need to extend it, we'll extend it. But we have to start somewhere as a community to to get it back on track.
The next one is, is there any way we can revisit the SWS contract again? They seem to do nothing for that money and contract that Lennar set us up with.
Yeah, the SWS contract is one that Lennar signed, and it was one of these ones where they signed it for 15 years. We are eight years into it, so we've still got seven years left to go on that. I'd love to change it. If we terminated it now, we'd have to pay substantial amount of money to terminate that contract. So I'm with you. I'd like to be able to look at alternatives. Unfortunately, we, you know, unless we're prepared to pay them to exit, it's, it's, you know, we'll have to just sit with them for the next few years.
One was, they wanted to confirm the assessment for the 60-foot lots as an additional 99 per month, which I think is 45 of that is the reserve. And then there'll be 15-something is the increase in the way.
Yeah, currently it's 554 for the 50-foot lot. The assessment is 508 plus the 45, which does equate to the $99.
Thank you. Is the budget still carrying the previous cost for Spectrum contract, or has it been adjusted for the lower number? If there is still an excess amount of funds, are these going towards the reserve?
It has been adjusted for the lower Spectrum number. So the 2023 budget is for the revised contract terms and conditions with Spectrum.
I I think the question is, how long will we have to be paying for the reserves?
Well, forever.
So Neil, my my question on the reserves, how long did you factor out on that reserve cost from a budget standpoint, or what the expenditures are that you know we're going to do over the next five or 10 years? So I mean, are we backgiving on that 45 inflation, other costs?
The.
Is it going to be a fixed cost lot thing for us for five years?
No, no, the, I mean, the reserve study showed that we we're already behind where we should be in terms of having a reserve fund, because Lennar chose not to put one in place. And so we're playing catch-up for starters. But this is over a 30-year period. So the reserve study is over a 30-year period, and it builds in inflation and builds in, obviously, the cost increases over that 30-year period.
So the first major expense that we see in the forecast is what? Is it golf course? Is it the first major expense that we need there, that this $45 is going to, that we need to pay?
John?
I'd have to look at it.
Look at the reserve study again.
I think it was painting, is it, five years?
It's probably, it's probably more buildings, building, building maintenance than this golf course. But we have to go back and. This is on everything, it's anything over the cost of $10,000 would be eligible for this reserve fund to be used for.
So I mean, since we're in arrears already, since Lennar did not say, or sort of, we're still playing catch-up, what's the first major expense that we're looking at that reserve funds are going to be applied to? Is that five years from now for the roof of the Plaza?
Well, it all depends on, you know, weather conditions. If we have a hurricane that takes our roof off, then we could have a cost next year.
That's insurance. That shouldn't be up there. That's insurance, that shouldn't be up there. Right? You know, it's weather, really, with a hurricane, it's insurance. So, I guess one of the things I might have forgotten to consider, I mean, like for my property, it's a 13% hike, which is very, actually, I was excited about that. Except considering inflation and everything else, climbing at such a higher rate, I was like, good job, guys, that's a very modest increase. But then, the reserve, we had that in, which is a brand-new cost, now takes another 23%, 24%, which is a pretty considerable hike. And I'm assuming this comes in January 1st?
Yes.
So, we're sitting in October, mid-October and we're going to then incur a cost increase to our residents at 24% to be very short notice. The only thing, the reason why I'm asking, has the board maybe considered looking at a reserve? Because we absolutely need a reserve. Is slide the scale over the first three years to lessen the initial burden year one? So, maybe instead of a 45% contribution year one, since we don't have any major expenditures for five years out?
But I think then that just means you're playing catch-up in year two and year three. And, you know, to answer your question about it being short notice, it's not short notice because this was discussed and approved at a board meeting two months ago. So, it's been out there for a good period of time. And so, it's not something that we've just suddenly come up with on the budget. We went through the facilities committee, analyzed the recommendations of the engineering firm and then it came to the board two months ago for approval and it was approved at that board meeting.
How much of that reserve includes money that is going to be paid 20 years from now? Because I don't think anybody's going to ask you 20 years.
I mean, we can, you know, if people want.
Neil, we didn't, we didn't hear the question or the comment.
The question was, how much of that money is going to be used in 20 years from now rather than, rather than now? I mean, the fact of the matter is that anybody buying into a community that sees there is a reserve fund enhances the value of your property because they know that, okay, they've got contingency funds available should anything happen to the facilities that we're buying into. So, that's an important factor that I think you need to bear in mind that we're building this for the future and to enable us to be able to cover any expenses that come up in a capital expenditure environment over the next. And we've not done it just, you know, just based upon our thoughts. It's based upon hard studies that have been undertaken by experienced and qualified engineers.
And as, as the manager of the building and responsible for the maintenance upkeep and driving, ensuring the value and safety of the buildings, eight years with no reserves to repair any of your buildings is scary. You're not going to have any money left in eight years. We're lucky if we're going to have, or in 20 years, we're lucky if we're going to make any step in the way. It's very important.
No problem if it's five years, 10 years. 20 years from now?
We won't be any point.
Sorry, Teresa, you had the answer.
I just, I just wanted to say because if we don't do the reserves, which we're going to have to do the reserves, if we don't do the reserves and something traumatic happens, the roof comes off, whatever, we all will be assessed a penalty at that point. I would rather pay $45 a month, put it in the reserves than have to come up with $1,000 at one point when all of a sudden something happens.
Yeah, that's a very good point.
We've got to be prepared for it.
The comment from the, from Teresa was that she would rather have the $45 a month and build up a contingency fund rather than have no reserves and then we have something that we need to pay for, some capital cost, and then that would result in a special assessment, which, you know, who knows what number that could be?
It's financial responsibility for everybody's biggest investment that they own. And that's, really, that's how we have to look at it. Because if there's a major, major expense that comes up in the next couple of years, I understand some of us might not be here in 20 years. I plan on still being alive. Again, it's financial responsibility and like Neil pointed out, if you have a buyer for your home and carry out customs, if there's zero reserves, who's going to want to buy that house in seven or eight years when they know that we're going to need to start putting $100,000, $300,000 or $500,000 into the property at that point? If a lot of, I'm sure a lot of people ask for reserve studies, you know, in account balances. So, again, for me, it's financial responsibility. Nothing against anybody in here that might not have paid it, but we had a heck of a time trying to cut the $150 over the last year and a half just to get these studies done.
Excuse me, when you look at your property, do you ask how much reserve we have?
I'm sorry?
When you look at your property, do you ask how much reserve you have?
I did. Those four years ago, Lennar still controlled it. And I think we all know that Lennar told us anything we wanted to hear to maximize our house.
I think, I think we've kind of done this topic to death. Can we see if there's any more questions on the phone?
So, the, one person's asking the status of the fence off of West Side as well as the privacy fence separating the Retreat houses and the Country Club houses on that small stretch of homes on Fluffy Live behind the dog park. We have daily issues with this area and the renters on this side.
I don't even, I don't even think that's Country Club. So, I can't answer that question, Marilyn.
The H O A has to cap at a certain point. It can't continue to upward trajectory forever, surely. So, comments about concerns about ongoing increase in the way. But I think we discussed that earlier where we started with, you know, subsidized funding to the, to the operations by the deficit funding of Lennar. And now, we're getting back to a benchmark and true picture of how, how much it costs to operate our community.
No, at this time, no, we don't have any idea what the Oasis or the Master increase will be.
Okay. As an individual homeowner, it's the same. Sorry.
Question, just going back to the Villas and the reserve, we got hit really hard because we're all collecting, which is another issue.
Yeah.
So, we got hit extra hard.
I know.
Our HOA is going to be $100,000 per month.
That's just, that's just a reserve.
It's just, that's just a reserve.
Yeah, I know.
Only the Villas. And so, that's it. Just think about it, how hard it is. You could have made it a little easier for us if you put that reserve in half to start with. I know that it's already been passed, but it's not saying it can't be changed. But just think about it, please.
Well, well, we did lobby and come out to the Villas particularly about the $54 and the Villas approved that.
Wait, 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 only a handful of the Villas.
Well, the people who turned up to that meet.
But not everybody even knew about the meet.
Well, I mean, we've had this conversation before.
I know, but it has to be resolved and not all of the owners even want to.
It's like tonight, you know, not everybody's here in the community and we make decisions based upon who's present at the time. And that was what was recommended by the Villas Subcommittee at that time.
With all the Villas, did we get an email about that we didn't even know about?
I think we've been over that before.
Yeah, I was just going to say, like, we close that. I know we've been over that, but I just wanted to make that.
No, I know.
All right. Any other?
Maybe. You only had one. Think you want one. Go ahead.
Okay. I understand that when you buy and sell a house, there's a type of improvement thing.
Yes.
In route.
Yes.
Does that go into the reserve?
That will be going into the reserves. We're also going to be sending out with the budget notice to increase that from 750 to 2,000.
Has it been going?
No, Lennar did not do that.
Lennar did not.
If we are changing, we have our proposals to change that, so it's specifically to the reserve.
Yeah, it will be going forward from January 1st.
Right, right, no, what I want to say is that this year, there's a sale in the Country Club.
It hasn't been so far.
Has it just been going to the general?
Just to general operating accounts.
Number two, with the P O S is going to be harmonized. Is there going to be a harmonization of the cost? Drinks on the grill are cheaper than here?
Yes, there will be harmonization of the cost, but the grill, which has not experienced a price increase since 2019, will be brought into alignment to cover the cost of.
Until they pay the hire tomorrow, they're a lot. So, we have.
For food, you remember. So, the food, so we will be putting together, we're learning down the cost analysis of the revenue that that facility is losing due to its lacking price increases since 2019. Food costs have gone up, beverage prices have gone up. Pricing has not been adjusted, the expense of the new cost that we have.
I have no idea.
Of a different cost structure than what golf is.
So, so the question, the question in the room was in terms of the harmonization of the point-of-sale system between the Golf Grill and the Plaza, would we be looking to, would First Services be looking to harmonize the pricing structure as well? And the answer is yes, because the Golf Grill has not seen any price increases since 2019. And as we've gone through earlier in terms of inflation, general costs of employment, et cetera, have all significantly increased over that period of time and yet, we've not increased any of the prices down at the Golf Grill. So, that will be something that will be implemented in the next few weeks.
Neil, on that, no.
Wow, that has to be a lot of script on the one question.
I am, I am, Marilyn.
The third question. So, the fact of the question was about the D2E and the new contracts that are looking at. Obviously, the idea is to get better service and quality service, but are you also expecting an improvement on the costs that Lennar negotiated this week, D2E years ago? Are we going to get better cost saving, there's some cost savings.
Well, in terms of Down To Earth, in terms of the landscaping.
Yeah, yeah, the landscaping with the new.
With a new provider, obviously, everything's gone up. Fuel costs have gone up, labor's gone up. The deal that Lennar did with Down To Earth was, you know, low-cost provider. And we've seen that in, in terms of the service we've been having. We're trying to get somebody who will come in who's, you know, reasonable cost but is a quality provider of services. So, you know, that's built into the 2023 budget. In fact, you know, thanks to Pat and the Facilities Committee, they have been able to negotiate some extra terms and conditions in terms of one of the companies, that's the front-runner, will come in and straighten up all the trees in the community. Down To Earth wanted to charge us $50,000 to do that. They're going to come in and straighten it all up for us. They'll give us a discount. They'll keep the pricing for 2023 and 2023, 2024 flat. And then, in 2025, on the third year, it's only a 4% price increase. So, some of these concessions we've managed to negotiate have been very, very, you know, promising for us. But overall, the cost of the landscaping has gone up. You know, I won't, you know, sort of sugarcoat it, it has gone up. That's just the nature of the market. Okay, any other questions online?
Online, one of the questions is, why can't we use our $75 food credit at the golf club to have breakfast once the Plaza's closed?
Yeah, it's a good question. I mean, we, two, two, two answers to that. One is the point-of-sale systems don't talk to each other at the moment. So, until we can get those harmonized, you know, then we can look at that option. But the second is, we want people to come up and use the Plaza. We don't have problems with people going and using the Golf Grill. It's very popular and we have outside play there as well, that come and use the Golf Grill. We're trying to encourage people to use the Plaza. That doesn't mean to say we can't look at that as an option once we've got those two systems harmonized.
Another one online is, can they do one check for the reserve fee and the HOA? Or do they need to do two checks when they submit their payments?
We're going to have this as one assessment, so it'll be a total of those two numbers and that will be sent out with the payment bucks, probably, when do we send those out? In December? Yeah, in December. So, it'll be one payment.
Okay, another one with regard to SWS is, are they actually fulfilling their contract? It seems like they're literally being paid $15 for 15 years to install equipment that's immediately outdated. Pay for alarm morgening, that's about it.
I mean, they've fulfilled their contract in terms of having the equipment. They have the link to the service center. If there's a fire emergency, you can press the button and that links into their service center. So, they are monitoring it. That, that's the contract that we have signed with them.
Yeah.
Or that Lennar signed with them, I should say, not us.
Another question is, if the roof comes off, do we not have insurance in case of emergencies?
Yeah, we do, we do have insurance, but as policies, there is, you know, deductibles, there is also. You know, they will obviously look to, to challenge us on that, but yes, we do have insurance cover.
There's a number of other questions with regard to the reserve. I'm wondering if we shouldn't maybe at a board meeting or a subsequent town hall have a little bit of an understanding of a deeper dive on the.
Sure. I mean, the next board meeting is November the 7th. So, happy to have that as an agenda item and we can go through the reserve study as one of the agenda items and go through where the engineer identified the, the fund that needs to be created.
And the Plaza is and will become a money pit. The increase in fees is out of hand, comment from a resident.
But I, I guess, I'm not defending it, but I would say. Lifestyle, community, that lifestyle community includes the golf, includes the pools, includes the gym and includes the Plaza Restaurant, includes the Golf Grill. All of these are lifestyle facilities that we buy into and there's a cost to that. The Plaza, because it's only open to residents and guests, doesn't have the same capability to raise money, to generate income that a Miller's Ale House does because they've got all of the Champions Gate community that can go and use that. There's only 937 homes can use this facility. So, it's, you know, it's a limited number. We have limited opportunity to grow that revenue. You know, the more we can do on the activities and the social side to bring people up here, I think will help, you know, us minimize any increases in the future.
Yeah, and with the, with the Golf Grill, I mean, if you're a fiduciary responsibility to make sure that it's covering its costs and it's, it's not. And if it's not covering its costs, those costs are still incurred by the rest of the community. So, I have to assess it, you know, to do it the right way, which is cover the cost.
And any other questions, Marilyn, online?
Just a, there's another comment on the fence, which I think we should just dig deeper into the fence around the Country Club and the Retreat over in that section. And just a comment that not everyone can attend daytime calls, so please be sure that it's at least recorded and then published. So, we need to take into consideration the times that we have our board meetings, perhaps moving them to the evening.
Yeah, and just on that, we do record all of our board meetings, so those are recorded. We've also moved to a 6:00 PM board meeting once a month. So, we discontinued the 10:00 AM board meeting, so that hopefully will be more convenient for people to, to attend going forward.
And that's it online.
Good.
Neil, how do we access those recordings?
When we send, when the minutes are sent out, there's usually a link on them, so.
The Friday updates have the link.
On the Friday update. TJ has a link to the minutes as well. But if you look at the Friday that TJ sent out, you should be able to click on it and it goes through to YouTube.
Neil, one more online. How about the Plaza staying open later in the evening to generate more dinner revenue?
But that's already done. We've already extended the Plaza Restaurant Kitchen to 9:00 PM.
November 1st.
From November the 1st. So, so that will hopefully attract more people to stay a little later. Any other questions from the room?
Just wondering.
Yes.
When will I be able to see the expenses, the actual expenses, January, September? Analyze September to December so I can compare it to the budget and see where it's decreased, decreased, what's going on?
Well, the, the financial. Well, the, the financials for January through August are online. So those are already available for you. So those, and those are the only ones we have today. So you have that already online for you to look at.
I believe that the issue control, the control. How do you follow the budget if you're, uh, annualize? Yeah, I want, I want to see, I want to see the, the issue variables and I want to ask you. Or is that very?
They can see.
Can you repeat the question?
Yes, he wants annual, annualized budgets.
Annualized actuals.
Actuals with compared to budget.
I mean, like any other company all over the United States, if you want to set the budget to the CEO, you say, this is the actual, this is the budget, this is the variables, and variables is two, so, 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 so.
So what's available to you is the balance sheet and?
The balance sheet and the income and expense statement are online.
So anybody can ask intelligent questions after where they've been on the budget table?
Year-to-date August are online and available for you to look at.
Unconnected.
Unconnected, yes. Go ahead.
That doesn't answer the budget. I have an actual January 2nd, that's fine, perfect.
Yeah.
But how do I analyze, so I can have one year compared to the budget?
But in terms of, John, maybe you can explain how the budget was done. We did look at a rolling 12 months in terms of actuals for a rolling 12 months and then worked from that to base the budget numbers for 2023, taking that into consideration.
So I can ask intelligent questions of why there is a variance for an increase in budget compared to. Yeah, some of the way, I'm sure.
Right. But all of that is available online by the monthly statements.
I was thinking of that, yeah.
Then come back with any questions you may have.
Well, I will.
Is the water, the monthly water bill or water, the water bill, I don't know if you've seen it? Right, like, the villas have more water. Really, we don't have any water. I mean, it runs on a nine-volt battery, so none of our properties have water. So I'm thinking water, you should probably go back a lot.
It actually, it actually did, correct? With, you had a leak, a bigger leak last year that caused it to be a little higher. So your, that's why some of your assessments didn't, it did reflect in there, it did come down a bit, right?
So, and then now we're getting water even less than that. And then it's rocky at the time, so we're getting even less than that. So I'm thinking that, that reserve.
That'll have nothing with the reserve.
60-foot lots, you know, if, if the water is making our reserve as much as a 60-foot lot or whatever and we're not getting any water, will that reserve go down because we're not getting the water?
Reserves are completely.
No, it's the assessment, I think you mean the assessment. Yeah, the assessment, the assessment is the one that has the landscaping, irrigation and termite costs in there. Obviously, we, the, the budget was done based upon rolling 12 months in terms of actuals and then looking at what the forecast was for the rest of 2023, building in inflation costs. And so, you know, that was how the calculation was done for the reserve, for the assessment.
The irrigation is lower this year than it was last year because of the issue that.
Someone said the hospital, the low down.
That's reflected in the budget.
It's reflected already in that number.
It's a big estimate.
Okay. If we've got no more questions, can I ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting at 7:17? Second? Any other questions? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Do you know? Thank you very much for everybody attending.